Good evening. I'll open the June 13th public hearing and meeting agenda for the Newton Planning Board, and we'll start with the pledge to the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Our first item on the agenda is the continued home occupation for Andrew Deardorf, 20 Highland Street, which is -- was continued from last meeting to notify abutters. And do we have any abutters present? We do not. Okay. So, the board was going to make a decision whether they felt that this was a home-based business or a home occupation. And so, they could do that this time. I had requested that we continue it so that abutters would have the ability to know what this gentleman was going to have in his home-based business, or, I mean, his home occupation.
I thought we had a question about the permit or something, if it was FCC permit, right? Is this the one?
No.
There was a second open item from last month, which is you had asked me to check with ATF to see if they had any rules pertaining to the necessity for my residents to be designated a business by the town in order to grant the federal firearms license.
Compared to the occupation.
Right. That's sorry. Whether it had to be called a business versus an occupation. The short answer to that is no. They -- it doesn't matter to them. And I have an email from their senior investigator to that effect that I think Gail sent out to the planning board shortly after last month's meeting.
Okay.
So, as long as it's in accordance with the zoning, ATF is good.
Okay. Jen?
In my opinion, this still falls as home occupancy, not a home-based business.
Right.
Make a motion that we determine that...
We have one question. Oh, no. I'm sorry.
I was just going to comment. A couple of years ago, the last one of these that we did, ATF did have a requirement that it was a -- you actually had to have a business. Obviously, they've changed the rules.
Right. Okay. Sorry.
Make a motion that we determine that the thing going on at 20 Highland is a home occupation.
I'll second that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's an occupation, right?
Yeah.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Any opposed? Nope. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You're good.
Great. Thanks.
And now, we have you on the record, and now, your home occupation.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Do I -- is there a permit fee for that that I need to pay?
Sorry?
Is there a permitting fee that I need to pay to the town for that?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Cup of Jack.
Good. Okay. Next item on the agenda is lot line adjustment for Mark Schiller, 36 Thornell Road and 16 Thornell Road. And I believe that Mr. Quintel is here to present and explain.
I try to make it a little clearer with some colors. Some of these you can share. I didn't make quite as many as I should have.
Okay. We can share one right here. Thank you.
Right. Cut down on expense.
Okay. So, these are all to be created. Okay?
Yes. Thank you.
So, my name is Dennis Quintel, a local civil engineer in town here. And Mr. Schiller's right here. And he's asked us to do a lot line adjustment for his property. And it's located on Thornell Road, originally known as the Baker Property on top of the hill. So, first of all, if you could just focus on the blue lines and the orange lines on the side here, that's the existing conditions. So, the existing conditions is the blue lines. This is a segment that's at a 200 scale, and if you put that at 100 scale, it adds onto the side over here. To clarify where this goes, I couldn't fit it all in one sheet, but this section here is just a 200 scale, and it goes on this section here. And it also abuts a section, another short section of Thornell Road there, Thornell Road here, Thornell Road across here. And so, again, the existing conditions is this lot line here, which is the same lot line as this right here. And so, what they would like to do is eliminate, abandon this lot line, which takes a three-acre piece here, basically, and a fifty-acre piece here, and create a new lot line here, making the house, the well, and the septic on a small lot, reducing that to just over five acres. The remaining land here, once this gets abandoned, would be just over forty -- forty-nine acres. And so, the reason for that is, Mr. Schiller could explain that a little bit more to you, but I think he wants to keep this all as open space and be able to sell, sell the house and the five-acre piece. So, that's -- it's a lot line adjustment. It, I believe it meets the requirements. The frontage here on this five-acre piece is 150 feet, over five acres. The well is 111 feet from the property line. The distance between these two lot lines here is about 110 feet, separating these two pieces. You kind of split the difference on where to draw this line through here, between where the well radius is and where the property line is there. Rest of this is all, and stay the same, all open space.
I have a question. It says, "Proposed use residence and conservation." Is this larger area proposed to go into conservation at some point in time?
Schiller could answer that.
Not that it's necessary. I was just curious.
Thanks, Dennis. As I have mentioned to some of you before, we -- you may recall, we bought this land a few years ago. There was a developer who was going to put on a 27 cluster development, and we bought it to stop the development. It was our objective at the time to, at some point, divide off the house and sell it. We live on Thornell Road. We don't need a second house. And we have the prospective purchaser here and some of our neighbors over there. And it was our objective then, and it remains our objective, to put all or the bulk of the rest of the land into some kind of conservancy. And whether we'll do it, we've talked to some of you on the town board, and we've talked to, I forget the name of the group up in Exeter, about how to do that.
Southeast Land Trust.
Southeast Land Trust, yeah. But it's our objective to preserve the land. That's why we bought it to begin with. But we don't need a second house. And so, the land would be conveyed with a restriction that would run with the land, the house at least, that it couldn't be further divided. That's also why it's got the road frontage it does. But the rest of the land will, will do something with the town whenever the time comes to do that.
Okay.
We may break off one little parcel for a relative, but our objective is, as you may know, you know, Forrest put his land in conservancy with your help, and this land abuts that land. And so, we'd like to have a big tract of land in conservancy all the way on Thornell Road.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any abutters here that would like to say anything?
Well, recognize me for the record that I'm here.
Okay. And your name?
Elliot SD, I'm here.
What's your name, sir?
Elliot SD, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you.
Peachy.
Okay. All right. There you go.
Yeah, he does about that.
Okay.
With Peachy.
Just do it.
I have a question.
Yes.
Well, Jen has a question, but... My question is, the orange line, that's a solid line now, so those are two separate parcels, like the section that's in the little highlighted, or, yeah, or sort of...
That's, that's at a 200 scale. So, it's, it's this big, but I couldn't fit it on one sheet, so I just reduced it down to 200 scale. But that orange line there is the same line.
Right. But that's going to be abandoned, so that there is a line, but that's the property line now with that orange one?
That's the line now, and we're going to do away with it. It follows along the stone wall, but it's going to be done away with as a property line. It's all going to be one piece.
So, now, it's two.
Right now, there's two lots, and we're still, when we're done, we're going to have two lots. We're going to have one lot here, and we're going to have one lot here. Just moving this lot line from here to around.
That's what I was just going to say. You're basically shifting the lot line way over to the other side of the property.
Exactly. We're paying taxes on a lot that is developable right now. You know, it's a buildable lot. So, we're just moving it over, and then, that'll be part of the conservancy. And then, the lot that actually has the house on it is what we're going to convey, and that'll, and then, all the rest of the land all the way over to our house at 39 will be in some kind of conservancy at some point.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Mr. Doggett?
I will make a motion to take jurisdiction.
I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Melvin, second. Hold those in favor?
I got, I got some more questions.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. One is sort of a point of information, the burial plot that's there.
There's no one buried yet. As I understand it, the Bakers actually got that approved from the state of New Hampshire, but unless we have volunteers, no one's buried there right now. But it is apparently a state-approved burial lot.
Yeah.
So, it's a legal burial plot, but there, there never, it's never been used.
Not to my knowledge.
That you know of.
There's surely no headstones.
What's the, on the, on the little piece, what's the frontage on Thornell there?
Right here.
150.19.
Okay.
Because when we did the subdivision for Forrest Reynolds, we did that a number of years ago, we broke that off as a separate lot. There were a couple lots that we, that we broke off. One that, that abuts over here, it's a buildable lot that was sold off, is a buildable lot. This other piece, I don't believe was sold off, but we created it as, as another buildable lot, so there's 150, just over 150 feet of frontage.
And then, like, so, and then, the arc that's got...
This has 671 feet of frontage. This has 500 feet of frontage, 550, and then, 150 for the new, the five-acre lot.
And then, the access to that other one in the blue is actually...
This?
Yeah.
There's a deed at Easement up the same driveway. I have a copy of the deed if you'd like to see it for, for this parcel. And it has Easement to access to the hill.
And then, there's another house on that other...
There's another house here. That's another separate lot that was where Dan Baker and Dan Mostriani used to live.
Yep.
Phil's daughter. And so, they had subdivided that off, which we had done a long time ago.
Are they going to have to record the lot line adjustments?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll have to record.
Is they going to be able to be recorded with a 1 to 200 little insert in it like that?
Yeah.
If it's not, the registry will kick it back.
Right. Right.
Obviously, we have to set bounds, and we also have to provide a MyLar for the kind of floor design and whatever.
Right. And Mr. Quintel has done business with the registry, so he knows what they like and what they don't like.
And if I can just add, we'll be working with Dennis, but if I could take the opportunity, if, if the board has any thoughts on, on what it might be interested in trying to conserve that land, we'd be interested, because that's our objective. So, whatever you guys are interested in is something we would like to pursue, but it's to preserve the land.
Conservation Commission's always willing to accept land as a donation.
Okay.
Had to throw it out.
Up to them, too.
There you go.
Put your hand higher, girl.
All right.
Conservation, if somebody's reading all of them.
Let us know, please.
Yes, Jen?
Just one thing I do want the board to be aware of. While I fully believe the owner's intentions of having this be conservation, the note on the MyLar that says the intention is for residential and conservation purposes does not bind him to make it.
Right. I know that. I was just curious since it said it on the application. That's fine. Okay. So, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any more questions from the board?
Do we have any questions from the audience?
Yeah. This is just jurisdiction. This is not applicable.
No.
All right. All those in favor? We're just taking jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction's fine. Okay.
Sandra? Okay. That's unanimous. Okay.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Unanimous.
We're not asking to, do they have butters, anything?
I, we did.
Oh, we did?
We asked if they had any, anything to say, and they didn't.
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
But thank you.
Obviously, as conditions, we have to set bounds and produce a MyLar.
Correct.
There are other conditions, but as far as I know, that's really the one I want to do. I just want to make clear so that we don't have a problem later on.
Addition of approval.
Yeah.
Once I, once I produce the MyLar, is that something that we have to come back to the, to the meeting, or is it something I can just bring to the office?
You can just...
The sham and sign?
Yes. Just bring it to the office. It doesn't need to go through a meeting again.
Okay.
There's nothing with this application that should require state approvals?
Right.
Well, yeah. Normally, I would put in all the stuff about state and local approvals. There's nothing here.
No.
Well, that he's going to, he's going to set the bounds, and he's going to produce the MyLar. Yeah.
Generally, we don't plot a MyLar until the bounds are set in case something changes. If there's a rock or something, we can't put the bound in.
Right.
It's a little old, a rock. So, sometimes things change as far as how the monument is set.
Right. Because the, the type of monument is actually listed on the MyLar.
Right. Okay. Okay. You're good, then.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did we vote on that?
We did, didn't we?
What's that?
We vote, we, we took jurisdiction, and we voted.
All in.
Right? It worked good. Okay. And I'll give you this colored one for your file.
I take that and get Bob's. She's going to end up in there anyway.
You've got one.
I've got one.
Thank you.
I'll add to my pile up over. What do you want to do?
File them up that high.
Yeah. Does it look like?
Okay. Excuse me. Okay.
For that lot. They can't subdivide it because there's not enough...
Next item on the agenda is Kinsley Corner Review with Mr. Twist and Attorney Hogan. Let's just wait a minute. Okay. All right.
Thank you, Ed Gavels.
Yeah. This one is going to get a chance, because I didn't think they were going to say.
I didn't know who they were.
Thank you all for being interested. I wanted to wait until we could hear you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members. My name is Scott Hogan. I'm a land use attorney from Durham, New Hampshire, and I've been working with George Twist for several months. And I think, as, as you probably know, George lives at 131 North Main Street. He has owned and resided there since 1988. So, several years ago, the board approved the Kinsley Corner duplex project. And so, several months ago, George contacted me. And as you know, I sent a letter to the board. And the two issues that I was really trying to get the board's attention on, from George Twist's perspective, was that when the project was originally approved as an open-space cluster development, one of the fundamental requirements in your zoning ordinance was that it be consistent, if you will, with surrounding residential property. But there's specific language in your zoning ordinance for a project like this that would require buffering from traditional residential properties around it. And for what it's worth, I've, I'm in my 23rd year of practicing land use law here in New Hampshire. So, I've seen big, small, medium residential projects, mixed residential projects, commercial, industrial, agricultural projects of pretty much every size and scale in different places all across the state. And I've represented lots of abutters, and that's the core of my practice. I usually represent abutting property owners or neighborhoods of folks or nonprofit organizations, et cetera. But I've also represented developers, applicants, planning boards, zoning boards, conservation commissions, historic district commissions, I think, one or two select boards here and there over the years. So, I have a fairly rounded idea of, you know, how these things go. And so, initially, one of the points I was just trying to make to the board was, you know, I completely understand the kind of development that was approved by this board. So, it's three different structures, each of them having two units of residential housing. And so, your ordinance that allows this kind of open-space cluster development, and, and these, the concept of this is a great one. And towns with cluster developments all over the state, you can put the development where it ought to be. You can eliminate development on wetlands and slopes and ledge and places that are wildlife habitats or special places for natural resources. So, the concept is a great one, which I understand. And when I looked at your ordinance to begin with, the ordinance that allows this kind of a cluster, open-space residential development, the language in your ordinance specifies that it's to ensure that open-space cluster developments like this do not adversely impact neighboring properties, and the board has to consider several factors and primarily maintain and preserve the rural character of the town of Newton by allowing an alternative residential development option which preserves large areas of open space and provides for visual buffers from existing roads and residential development. And in my experience, the reason why those kinds of provisions exist is because if you have a traditional, single-family residential neighborhood with single-family homes, something like this doesn't look like those. It doesn't quite act like those, and the visuals, et cetera, are such that there should be buffering. There should be setbacks. There should be provisions to accommodate the existing residential owners when you're making an allowance, if you will, for something like this. So, the premise of it was, does not adversely impact neighboring properties, provides for visual buffers from existing roads and residential developments. So, back when you all were reviewing the application in the first instance, George Twist and other neighbors came out to express concerns over, this doesn't kind of look like the kind of housing that is there right now. We have concerns over the visuals, and we have concerns over drainage. And, and I want to make sure those are the two issues that, that I've expressed to the board on George's behalf, the issues about the buffering and the drainage. Those are the two primary issues that, you know, that I've been looking at since the time that I first communicated to the board. So, so I expressed those concerns to the board at the very beginning. I've gone out to the property now, I think, four times. The last two times that I've been out there, I've met your town engineer. I reached out to Mr. Bartlett, who is the applicant, and Mr. Bartlett has answered my calls, returned my emails. Every single time that I've tried to contact him, he's met me at the site every time we've had a meeting there, and has been very responsive. And what he told me, what Mr. Bartlett told me at the beginning was, I wanted to do this kind of a project, and then, the design of it was everybody else's business but mine. And I'm paraphrasing, but not too much. And he said, "The board had its preference for how this would be designed. The state wetlands board had its preference for how this would be designed." And so, he designed it the way that, you know, he thought he could get it approved, you know, in those places, which makes perfect sense. So, looking at those issues and looking at, when I looked at the plan itself, if, if nothing else, if, if I'm not sure about anything else, it's that before this project was reviewed and approved, the pre-construction conditions out there between George Twist's house and this parcel, and I submitted pictures to the board with my letters, and I supplemented them in a number of ways, but there are a whole bunch of condition, pictures that show the pre-existing conditions that basically show that from George Twist's property, from his back deck, which looks out to the, to this project, the pre-construction conditions were a really established dense tree cover. You couldn't see possibly, and, and the pictures that I submitted, some of them were full leaf-on conditions. Some of the pictures that I submitted, it's snowing, and there's no leaves. But even in all of those conditions, you could see that the pre-construction conditions were from, from the neighboring properties, there was a completely mature tree buffer such that you had no lines of sight into the specific construction areas, the roadways, the actual structures themselves, where they were going to be built. There was no way pre-construction that you could see from George's property back into the site. The post-construction conditions are, and again, I've been out there myself now lots of times. The post-construction conditions are such that there literally are no trees left in various places, such that the Twist property now, now has a completely unobstructed view from every aspect of, of the property, from the deck, from the inside, looking out the windows, looking from George's driveway, between the garage and his home. Everything right now is absolutely, completely open between his property and the site. And so, when I looked at this in the first instance, I, I looked at the approved, I looked at the recorded plan. And I looked at the minutes of this board's discussions of that. And there were neighbors that showed up to express their concerns about having a buffer. And, and Mr. Doggett, I believe you in the, I think it was the April, this was March, April of 13, in the April meeting, I know that you were one of the ones that raised the issue of the buffers and saying, "We should have the 25, a 25-foot buffer." So, if you look at the plan right now, there is absolutely one place where they show a 25-foot no-cut tree buffer. But when that comes down to the Twist property, there's a notation, and you can see on the plan where it comes from the 25-foot no-cut buffer, and it comes down to a little point. And then, there are a number of different places on the plan, a bubble towards the development where it's a no-cut buffer. The original plan showed a no-cut buffer as you come around towards 108 on the new Kinsley Drive entrance. So, the idea was to have that no-cut tree buffer along the common boundary line for the folks that live along 108, and then, coming up the side of Kinsley Drive as it comes towards 108 as well. So, if you go out there today, there is a buffer for the folks on the other side of George's property. When you come down to his, there is just none. There is no buffer. The pictures absolutely show it. And, and for purposes of where we go, and I'll, I'd like to suggest later to the board kind of where maybe, you know, we can continue this conversation. But if any of you haven't been out there recently to see the conditions that exist today for yourselves, I would really suggest and urge that you go and, and look at it for yourselves. And as I said, I met with Mike Vignali, I met with Billy Bartlett, I met with Charlie Zilch, his engineer, and I know Charlie and his firm for a long time from other places. So, we've met out there on the site several times. And I brought the plans with me. I had yellow highlighted the buffer areas myself. And Madam Chair, you had sent me an e, or a letter at one point. And, and part of that was saying that you understood that neither George nor I had come into the town to look at the plans, and so, maybe we weren't aware... town to look at the plans, and so maybe we weren't aware of the fact that there was a tapering buffer line. We have, we looked at the plans from the very beginning. I brought those plans out when I met with Charlie and Mike and Billy Bartlett, and, you know, so we were very well aware of those. And the thing that I'm still trying to get a sense of, and I'm just talking about the buffering right now because the drainage is another issue that I'd like to talk to, speak to the Board about. But long before I got involved in the last several months, George himself, several years ago, submitted a letter to the town, and he had email communications back and forth between the Planning Board, and this was back in 2015 into 2016. And at the time, George submitted a letter where he detailed, you know, all of the concerns that he had. And it was drainage issues, it was setback issues, it was that there's no tree buffer between the property as required, et cetera. So I know he was frustrated in that he didn't feel like he was getting a substantive response, and I think that's why he obviously contacted me. So when I communicated to the Board originally, it was, there's no buffer, the drainage issues are really problematic as the development has been constructed. We went through a pretty frustrating time just trying to get the complaint formally before the Board. And the Planning Board sent me to the Building Department and your Code Enforcement Officer, she sent me back to the Planning Board thereafter. It was sent, it was referred to the town engineer for his review, and we went out to the site and we went through that process of discussing it. So when I looked at, your town engineer issued a memo to this Board back in March. And one of the things that he was, that he said there was that the area near the new stormwater pond is one area where the buffer was reduced to only a few feet. And so, the thing that I want to try and tie together for the Board between, I'm talking about the lack of a buffer, which is required for this kind of a project by the zoning ordinance, and I'm talking about the drainage. The drainage for this project was designed such that all of the stormwater gets put into detention structures, it gets treated, and then it eventually gets released, but it gets released right into the existing surface water drainage that is on George Twist's property. And at the time, George and a bunch of the abutters said, why don't you just design the stormwater management for this to take it all, treat it, and release it in the back of the property? And there's a, obviously, a giant wetland system to the rear on the part of the property that's being conserved as open space. And these kinds of things, you know, I've had a lot of these, and there's often a really clear opportunity to design the stormwater system to retain the water and release it into a wetland as long as you have some pretreatment, and off it goes. Here, the problem since then has been during the construction process, during big rain events, construction sites are unstabilized. They have lots of mud and runoff and silt and sediments, and they have concrete trucks washing themselves off onto the streets, and all of that for months now, every time it rains, and George has, you know, very well-documented photographs of all of this, all of that runs into the detention structures which runs into George's property. That's the stormwater drainage plan that was approved for this project. Because the drainage system was designed the way that it is, to put it all onto George's property instead of directing it all to the back, the drainage structures themselves required land and area to do it that also required the trees to come down. And so if you go out there and look at the property, George is the only one that does not have a buffer from the construction, from this project, which doesn't look like traditional, single-family residential homes. And so he was kind of the sacrifice for the drainage plan. The drainage plan required the trees to come down, and that's why George doesn't have any buffer that he should have had under the ordinance. The drainage could have been designed to go the other way, and this is where we are right now. The one thing that I'm trying to get some clarity from the Board on tonight, and what I'll say too is that, one of my frustrations coming in here tonight was that, I think it was two weeks ago or so, is when I met your town engineer and Billy Bartlett on the site for the second time. They looked over the staking that was done of the buffer area, and Mike said, I'm going to make a report and I'll get it to the Planning Board. We had already been put on the agenda for tonight. And so coming in here tonight, we don't have Mike's report yet. And Mike also, I'll have to say, has been, you know, really professionally responsive to me when I've asked him. I called him today and said, hey, Mike, we're going to the Planning Board tonight. You know, I thought we would have your report. That was the whole kind of point of, you know, trying to get in front of the Board tonight so we could talk to you about that and whatever his conclusions were. So, we still don't have, I personally don't have that as of, you know, the minute that I'm talking to all you tonight. And Mike said that he needed some authorization to release it, and so here we are. So the point that I'm trying to make to the Board tonight is, I understand that we're now, this is 2017, you were in review 2013, but the project has just been in construction now for this amount of time. If there was the kind of buffer that was required, then, and the pictures that I have, I've got pictures of George looking at, you know, the portable toilets that the construction workers use, and giant plumes of muddy water running off the construction site and going into the drainage system which goes into George's property. Pictures of the drainage detention structures themselves, you know, filled with water lots of times. Every single time I've been out there, they've been almost fully filled. And I've asked the engineers each time, you know, aren't these supposed to kind of clear within a day or two after a storm event such that they're not standing pools of water? Because mosquito-borne illnesses and all of the rest of those are concerns that George has had and expressed. So, in trying to, you know, understand what the conditions are right now, what they might be, Mr. Bartlett said to me, yeah, you know, I mean, I could give George some more trees, I could, you know, whatever. But you are the Board that actually approved, you know, the plan that we're dealing with right now. So, the technical question that I really wanted to address with the Board, and because I don't have the town engineer's, you know, most recent report, you know, I can't say for sure, and that's why I'm asking the Board this question, is that when Mike Vignali, back in March, he gave the Board a memo where he said he had gone out to the site in response to my initial letter. And he said in that that there are other areas, wetlands towards Route 108 at the large culvert, where some cutting may have occurred within the no-cut buffer. The plan, the plan that I saw and that I had with me when I went out and met with the folks on site, and may I approach the Board just?
Yeah. So, the area in yellow, this is the fully 25-foot wide no-cut buffer, that long rectangular section. Then from here, it tapers down to this point, and there's a note on the plan that says no-cut buffer with varies. And then there's, you know, there's a little section here, the line goes around the corner up the entrance road. So, when the town engineer was out there previously, and he said, there are other areas towards Route 108 at the large culvert where some cutting may have occurred within the no-cut buffer, I'm trying to reconcile what was, there was a previous plan that showed the wetland buffer going right around that corner and going up the edge of Kingsley Drive, besides being to the rear of George Twist's property. And that seemed to be what Mike was indicating back in March. But in the most recent discussions, and when we were out there looking at it, and when Charlie Zilch sent his folks out and they staked out the boundaries of what they were saying was the no-cut buffer on the ground, there wasn't anything around the corner as you go out towards Route 108, as if there is no no-cut buffer anywhere except along the rear property lines. And that's something that I'm just not technically clear about in terms of what was actually approved in the first instance. If the Board approved the no-cut buffer to come around that corner and come up the edge between George's property and the road, then there isn't anything there now. And that seems to be something that, you know, is an issue. There are some places even in the rear where there are just, as I've said from the photographs, it is a clear line of sight without a stick of a tree between George's property and what you see as the development right now. So I'm trying to determine in the first instance, what actually does the Board believe to be the no-cut boundary? Because right now, based on what I think the town engineer did, it's only in the rear, and the big part of it, if you will, the big part of it is what the neighbors have the benefit of. The little skinny part where there actually isn't a buffer, where you can actually see straight through, that's George's backyard, right there. So that's the first part of the problem. And as I said, the drainage infrastructure itself is really why the trees were cut to the extent that they were there. And some of the pictures that George has sent me recently, and that's why the issue that I'm talking about as you come up Kingsley Drive towards Route 108, everybody coming into the development, all of their headlight wash is going to come right across George's place. And in the olden days, there were lots of trees and it wouldn't have made a difference. Maybe in the winter, he would have gotten some of that. But right now, there's, there is absolutely no buffer of any kind along that edge. And if I may just approach again, so, the pictures now, there are many of them showing the clear lines of sight. The previous pictures, as I've said, and actually, I could pass it out, you know, that's a great idea, thank you. I'm going to, I'll pass all of these around, you can just, I'll take a look at them for yourself. But there's no question that the pictures, the pre-construction conditions, and I'm going to, I'll do the same thing, I'm going to send up each of these all around so you can each look at them for yourself. Winter, spring, summer, fall, George has pictures from the back of his property in different directions and angles, where there is absolutely fully mature tree cover such that you can't even in leaf-off conditions see beyond the back of his property to this site. And so now he has, in terms of the combination between the buffer and the drainage issues, he has clear sight of all the drainage infrastructure, he's got culverts that he can see from his backyard, the detention ponds themselves, besides being problematic for retaining water for a really long time in kind of stagnant conditions, you can just also see all of the structures without literally any buffer whatsoever. And as I'm, and as I'm talking about, when you go up the other side on the entrance...
Camera cannot be hearing him.
Oh. You're going to, if you're going to, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, because the audio is probably not.
Right, it's not.
And quite honestly, the people need to be able to hear.
So I'm going to give you the pictures and let them send around, and I'll go back and talk again.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
Thanks for reminding me of that.
I just have a question. I just wanted to state something, but if you want to let the attorney finish, then?
Jim had some questions.
Thank you.
So, I think it's pretty clear, and George is the one that established what the pre-construction conditions looked like. I don't think there's any question about what they were at the beginning. And the post-construction pictures show the fact that there was a fully mature tree buffer that was taken down to nothing to accommodate the specific drainage design that was the preferred one. So, in a variety, in a whole bunch, a whole bunch of different ways. So here's George, he's lived in this property since 1988. He's now in a position where he has a completely different piece of property in terms of his daily use and enjoyment of it, if you will. He now has a construction site behind him, he has backup beeping trucks, he has construction noise, he has the visuals of all of that, et cetera. But in terms of, when you get beyond the daily use and enjoyment part, and he's saying, okay, you know, what's happened to the value of my property? This project behind me by the town's zoning ordinance was required to buffer itself from me. And it was required by the ordinance to not have a negative effect on my property. But if George now says, God, I can't take it anymore, I can't look at the construction anymore, I can't look at the porta-potties every day, I can't look at the, you know, six units, you know, clustered in a dense development like it is behind me, and he wanted to go sell it, so now he's in a completely different situation. The value, the selling price is going to be less, it's going to take him much longer to get a buyer that will buy it at a lower price, et cetera. And so the whole premise of cluster, open space developments like this is to prevent all of those negative impacts on abutting properties. So, all of that said, I've been trying to work through a practical process where I've also, as I've said, I've spoken to Mr. Bartlett a number of times. He's been very cooperative and communicative. But when it comes down at the end of the day, you know, I have to say to the Board, this kind of project requires a buffer and it doesn't have one. This kind of project on drainage, your regulations on drainage issues say there can't be any increase in post-construction flows. If you take all of the stormwater from this property, which used to sheet flow back towards the wetlands, and you design it specifically to be put onto George Twist's property, there is an increase in post-construction flows. And as I've said, all of the, you know, the silt and sediments and concrete runoff and truck washing, George has watched it all run into the detention structures, through the thing, and go right into his property, you know, in front of his house. And so, buffers and drainage are the two things that just seem obviously to be lacking in compliance right now. And so, I'm not sure, and I've talked for a long time, and I really appreciate the Board's time and consideration of this, but I'd really like to hear from the Board, and again, if the Board can inform me, if I'm right or wrong about the fact that...
about the fact that there should have been a buffer also up the, the side of Kinsley Drive as it goes to Route 108, besides the buffer that we're talking about between the properties themselves, that's what I'm trying to determine specifically. And again, I, I feel a little, I'm frustrated that I don't have the town engineer's report. And even if the town engineer's report said that the buffer in the back seems to match the plan, the plan itself shows no buffer. So, you know, but at least in the first instance, you know, I'd like to hear what the town engineer had to say, that I could kind of speak to that. But I'd also like to hear what the board, you know, would like to, you know, inform me, if the board can tell me about what it believes the buffer was supposed to be at the beginning, if the board believes it's not what it should be today, and whatever the board has to say about the drainage issues. And, you know, that will at least inform me, and I can talk to George, and we can then go talk to Mr. Bartlett or figure out, you know, if there's some other avenue we need to go. But we want, we at least wanted to come in here and present this in the first instance and have a discussion with the board about it.
Okay. Did you, you had something?
I just had a general comment. Yes, we do have the, the town engineer's report. That was prepared for the planning board, and it does not become a public document until the planning board has discussed it. As such, it's, unlike a document that's prepared, that's prepared during construction where, or sorry, during planning where there are articles on the plan that need to be addressed and needs to be done in a timely fashion. It makes sense that we just received this, which was dated June 5th. We receive it, but this is the first time that we meet. We meet twice a month. We are not a continuously sitting board. So until then, after this evening, you're welcome to a copy of it. However, that is, as it's prepared for the public body, it becomes public once the body has reviewed it.
And I guess the only point I was making there was that since the board itself was the one that suggested to us that we'd be put on the agenda for tonight, and we were out at the site two weeks ago, it just seemed, it just seemed the most reasonable thing that if we had, you know, the benefit of it, I could come in and speak to it, to the board tonight, and I, and I can't. That was the only point I was trying to make.
Jim?
So regarding the question of if there was the buffer there or not, honestly, I haven't seen, looked at this plan in quite some time, so I couldn't answer that. But I would advise the board, because your jurisdiction over this at this point is limited at best, that you not discuss this any further until you speak to town council. Not trying to put a damper in the conversation, but I think it would just be in the town's best interest for you to speak to Sumner before you proceed any further.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. And for what it's worth, I'm not, I wouldn't object to the board, you know, getting advice of, of council if it wishes to. And, and, I mean, I, I know and work with probably most of the municipal council in the state, and so, you know, that's perfectly fine. And I, and I really want the board, you know, to, to be informed before it responds to us. So i, if the process is that, that, that you will take up that suggestion and seek that kind of advice, then I would certainly support that. And then, once you do, we could have another conversation. However, the board would like to proceed, but as I said, I'm, I'm trying to decide. And, and I, and I understand the posture of this in, in terms of what you're saying, which is, this was a fully approved, recorded plan. But I've had several ones where there's a fully approved, recorded plan, where once the construction process starts, there are various aspects of things that happen once you start building a project where you have to change something on the ground. Completely understandable. But at the same time, what we're saying is, they've started to construct your approved plan, and we believe that they are doing it in violation of certain conditions that you imposed. So yes, that is a legalistic position that we're taking. And yes, I, I understand that you would maybe want to have council tell you, you know, whether I'm full of it or not, or, or suggest, you know, what process we might all follow from here or, or anything else. So, so any of that, I'm certainly supportive of.
Can we have this now?
Once we discuss it.
Okay. We haven't discussed it yet. Okay, so. All right. Okay, so I, I guess our next step is that we will talk to the town attorney. And then after we've discussed the memo, then we can issue you a copy of this memo, which is from your last meeting with the town engineer, okay?
Thank you. And, and just so I'm clear, so I would be able to get a copy of the town engineer's most recent memo at what point?
After it has been publicly discussed.
So we're gonna, we're gonna discuss it right now?
Its existence has been discussed, but we're not discussing, we have yet to discuss the, the content of it. And if we're sending this to council, it is part of our evidentiary package that we would send to council. Once again, it, it's under attorney-client privilege at that point, and therefore, other than a motion of discovery, it wouldn't be released until we bring the matter back.
Why do we not discuss this right now? The, the report. I, 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 I see no reason to, to not give him a copy of the report at this point.
So one of my concerns is that because you have already approved this plan, what the abutter is basically saying is that that plan is in violation. At that point, it is a code enforcement officer and select board matter. It is no longer under the purview of the planning board. He's right that often things get worked out if there have been changes, and sometimes the planning boards in an informal place are involved. Whether you should be or not, I think you should seek the counsel of your town attorney. So I would suggest not discussing that report at this point, until you've at least discussed it with your town attorney as to whether to release it or not. And I have not seen this report, so I don't know the content.
Gives what the, the condition on the ground is.
I don't, honestly, I don't know what Mike Fignelli's report contains. I don't have the information. I've not seen the report.
You didn't give this to her in your packet?
She didn't get a copy of this?
And, but that, that's fine.
Get this in the packet?
Whether I had seen it or not, my advice would be the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And if I may, the only, the only.
We don't have, we don't have the power of the jurisdiction to do any of this. Because our jurisdiction left as soon as the plan was recorded.
Right.
And the only thing I would say about that, and following on, on the writer's comments, are that in, in the process, when I submitted this to the planning board initially, there was a point at which, you know, I was notified that this was going to be sent, had been forwarded to the code enforcement officer. And then I waited a bit, and I got another message basically saying, Tina Cardoso, your, your code enforcement officer, said, "Sorry, it's taken so long to get back to you. She's been doing some research." And she wanted to tell me that this is going back to the planning board from her office. It's not under her jurisdiction. Sorry that you're getting dumped from office to office. So I'm just, I'm just, for the record, saying, the town has already told me that it doesn't believe it's a matter for the code enforcement officer. And so however you figure that out from here, you know, is, is up to you. But I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that it's gone back and forth a, a couple of times that way already.
Okay. All right.
I would make a motion that we convey this situation to council for input and guidance.
Second.
All those in favor? I oppose.
I think you gotta get the report now.
Well, I, I, again, I appreciate the board's time. And, and if I, if I may, just for my own information, who is town council for?
Sumner Calhoun.
Sumner Calhoun. Sumner and I know each other fairly well. So, so from this point, the board will, will inform me about, you know, when we can get back here in, in, in front of you all again? Or how you, how you would like to proceed?
It'll depend on Mr. Sumner's schedule and when he gets back to us, and how, how that coordinates with the next meetings and whatever.
Very well. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, can I suggest, if you're willing, that the board retain those photos for your records?
Absolutely.
That would be convenient.
Okay, yeah, that would be very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll end up sending these pictures.
Yeah, it should all go in.
Yep. With our request. Yeah. So you hang on to that, because that'll go there. Okay. All right. Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
And I have been doing that, cutting every single tree. I'm just wondering if we can do something about it. I think that pretty quickly we're gonna be able to see the paper.
Okay. Well? Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes from May 23rd.
So moved.
No. It's, yeah. Yes, okay.
I have a motion. I have a second. Minutes.
Oh.
May 23rd. Sorry, seeing we had side conversations. May 23rd minutes, I have a motion.
Jim Hall, I mean White, second, right?
You second? Okay.
I have a.
Yes.
Correction?
Yes.
Item 4A. The acceptance of the minutes for May 9th, and the motion to approve the minutes of January 20, January 10th.
It's May 9th.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, I did read them.
Operator error.
Okay, all right. And with, and with that correction, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay.
I'll tell you later.
We have a financial guarantee reduction request over Sarah's Way. Engine, town engineer has gone over this and has recommended that we reduce the, in the amount of $6,500. You all have the memo and let you know.
I'll make a motion that we recommend, I believe this is a recommended board of selectment, a reduction of $6,500 in the Sarah's Way subdivision financial guarantee.
Okay, Mr. Holland, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, thank you. Okay. Manifests? Thank you. Okay. $11.43 for postage.
Move to pay.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sandra? Okay, thank you. Abutter's notices for the lot line adjustment that we just did. Amount of $164.75 from NEPRA.
Move to pay.
Second.
Jolly.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's all that's on the agenda now. I didn't know whether you, we had talked about going over the rules of procedure. I don't know if you wanted to do this tonight or if you wanted to wait for another night.
We were gonna do home-based business tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, the home-based business application. And, and then I have.
But you just were, we didn't set a date.
We, no, we didn't set a date. You're right. But I was going to.
The, the home-based business application, we had spoke of, and there were gonna be some editorial changes made. And the one in the package had no changes.
Right.
We decided we could talk about the whole.
I thought we were gonna talk about the whole thing.
Yeah, we were gonna talk about the whole thing.
You talked about whether it was gonna be from the planning board or.
Oh, yeah, I had selectmen up there, and that was wrong. But you didn't like the fact that these didn't seem to match what's in the book.
Right.
But they were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 instead of A, B, C, D, and they do match what's in the book.
Not one for one, and the wording is different, and there's one that's there that, that, that isn't in the book at all.
No. Well, the last three are not. Photograph and the building, let's be all applicable. If you go down from 1 to 10 and you look in the book.
I did. And I couldn't match them up.
Okay, could I show you? I would like to show you.
Yeah, let's see, I have an extra copy.
1, 2, 3, 13. Okay. It's all of these right here.
Yep.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Page 13?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm on of the, of the application. Oh, sorry.
Page 14.
Page 14.
And a new copy. Remember, I told you I repaged it, paginated it.
Yeah. It's still 14. It was 14, the old one, too.
Say about the accessory? This says house or accessory. I think home application located in house or structure accessory.
Can I see your copy again?
Looking. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, it is.
That's what I said, they, they don't match.
Where are you looking?
I'm looking right here.
Right here.
I'm doing right here. Start from here. Start from under general, right there. This is it. I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 instead of A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
And the general, exterior of the building, is that where I'm starting?
Yes, yep.
Must not create or display any evidence of a home-based business.
1, 2, and 3 are all capturing A. I think that's what the confusion is.
Yeah, 'cause then, yeah.
Where, where is 6? I couldn't find 6.
It's probably up in the other section. It's just sort of a compilation.
That's what I'm saying, it, it, but, but if we're gonna do the form.
But why does it have to be exactly the way it is in the book?
So that someone who looks at it can actually go through the ordinance and go through the thing and check it off.
So my suggestion would be, I think that this is, I think this is easier for people to follow, but the reference to it should be included at the end of each statement so that they can go back and track it. I think that this kind of list is easier for most applicants than looking through the ordinance, but the ordinance reference should be included at the end of this.
Because that's what I don't like about checklist. Because then the people just read the checklist, but they don't read the ordinance, and then they say, "Well, it wasn't on the checklist, so that's why I didn't do it." So to me, there should be a definite reference then, you know, "These are the rules. This is trying to make it easier for you."
If you're gonna make a checklist, it should, it should be the same thing as what's in the rules.
Well.
I completely agree. I just think that the way, the way the ordinance is actually written, there's, for example, under CA, there's a lot of content in A that I think people, quite frankly, that are just sort of scheming through this won't see that the maximum, maximum size sign is two square feet. They, they should see it, but I think it's just a dense ordinance. So I think a checklist would be very useful to have each item spelled out. But the reference to the zoning, particular zoning ordinance should be at the end of each item that's on the checklist.
And, and if, if that were, if you're gonna do it that way, then you get like, because if you wanna split up A, so you have 1. And if that were, if you're going to do it that way, then you get like, because if you want to split up A, so you have 1A, 1B, 1C, so that you could highlight them.
Yeah, I think there's more organizational ways you could
But it's still, in order to just follow along, it would make it a whole lot easier.
Yeah.
So you want to read exactly like it's written in the ordinance? Okay.
I would. I don't know about anybody else.
I just particularly think that this is easier, but you know, if that's what you want.
Yeah, right, yeah, oh yeah, I want a checklist.
This is not supposed to be, this is just supposed to be sort of the highlights of what's in the ordinance.
And you run into big problems when you start to reword what the rules are.
Okay. Then we can fix it so it's exactly the same as what it's in there. Is there anything else? But you have my copy. Is there anything else that you want included here besides where I did from the A to whatever? And do you not like 10, 11, and 12? Because that's not on the thing, these are things that they have, see, this is like, the last three are things that are supposed to be given with this application. They're not in the book.
I would add the no more than one home occupation is permitted.
Okay.
What is it, no more than?
No more than one home occupation. Yeah, that should be
That may
Well, maybe we can put it up here.
I was just going to say that could go in the
Right up here. Home-based business is a provision that serves, not more than one home occupation per residence is allowed.
Is permitted, yeah.
Okay.
Just, well, my suggestion is the top, it says home-based business, but then it says, it should like, to me, say slash home occupation, because it is the both things, right?
What I wanted to do, I think we, I wanted to do one, a separate one for each one. The reason it says both up the top is because the zoning ordinance says home occupations and home-based businesses.
Yeah, that's the subset.
That's the, up here on the top? That's the reason why it has both here. This one would just be the one for a home-based business. The other would be for the home occupation.
But isn't it us who determine if it's a business or an occupation, so shouldn't they be together?
Correct, but they can fill out the same stuff and then we can decide whether it's a home occupation or a home-based business.
But that's what I'm saying, up here, she might say home-based business or occupation.
No, because they're coming in and asking, we're making the determination, but they're asking us what they want, and then we decide, yes, it is or it isn't.
Right.
There could be, say, an asterisk and at the bottom it says the planning board shall determine, verbatim from the ordinance, if your application is a home-based business or home-based occupation.
I like those bottom three requirements on the checklist.
Thank you.
The photograph. Definitely a copy of the assessment card so that we
Do we address having a business in an accessory building?
We just approved one.
Recently.
We just approved one, the guy was
Oh yeah, the guy with the container.
Right.
Yeah, which is
That's true.
This one was going to be for the business, not the occupation.
Right, this was going to be for the home-based business and I
Because we don't have a permit for home
Well, I was just going to say
This is home-based business. There is no permit required for home occupations.
Right.
But if we make a similar form like this that says home occupation, and I can have every single thing same listed.
Right.
And then we could determine whether it's a home occupation or home My intent is, since a lot of these are going to look very similar, is to make them all different colors. Home-based business maybe would be yellow and the other one would be green and one would be pink, and I think that that would make it easier for us. What do you think about that?
I think one big difference that needs to be very clear and needs to be an addendum to this is that for home-based businesses, it falls under your conditional use requirements, which requires basically a minor site plan.
Right.
So, Gail Gail had sent me some language which I think is a great starting point, I had a couple of tweaks I was going to suggest to it to help clarify with people that they need to, say, give the sketch that shows the setbacks and where the building is and indicate where the new, where the business is going to be taking place, that information.
If you're going to do that
But that's not on here, it should be on the checklist.
Right, that's what I'm saying, in addition to the picture and the
Correct, so
So you can add those other things to it.
Oh, is this what you
The other thing I was going to say, on number 13?
There you go. We don't have 13 yet.
Oh.
On number 13?
Where are we looking on 13?
On your checklist.
The building housing, the home occupation must be
Shouldn't be an occupation, is it?
We have 14 on us.
We got 14.
Oh, that might be the old one.
That's you.
Sorry.
Well, that's the one within that package.
Okay, sorry.
So keep in mind, you don't require the minor site plan until you've determined it's a home-based business and not a home occupation.
Right, that's why I'm thinking
Yeah, we didn't go this one.
This is probably the one that I just did at home.
Well, I think it would be good to have it slightly separate from this initial checklist, because if someone's just a home occupancy, they don't need to provide you with a sketch, they don't need to provide you with the square footage of the business or where the parking is or the septic system. I mean, I think it's okay to indicate that if you do meet the home-based business requirement, then you have to provide all this information. It may be overkill for most applicants.
Okay.
I caught the one about occupation. You can have this copy.
Yeah, it's good, good, thank you.
And technically, you can't require the photo or the assessment card. You can put those as suggested pieces of information.
Well, we can, we do the assessment card. We can do the assessment.
But I'm just saying that you can't, because it's not in your ordinance, you can't require that they provide it, you can strongly suggest they provide it.
So it shouldn't be on the checklist then?
You could say that planning board may request
May require, may request
Or suggested pieces of information.
Okay.
That would be my only Admittedly, a picture's worth a thousand words, but
I mean, our administrative assistant could print it off if we knew we were coming to talk about it, we could each get one in our packet really, if they don't supply one.
I mean, your assessment cards includes a photo or at least a vision appraisal.
Of the house, yeah.
It's all public record.
However, it does help to make sure that we're all discussing the same piece of property, that's quite often what the assessment card is very good for.
In pictures, yeah.
Well, especially, I mean, there are certain places in town where you can go down streets and every single house is very similar.
In the same color.
I was being nice, I was leaving out the
So we're changing this to this planning board, not town selection?
So what do we want, town of
Yeah, that was the old one, yeah. I guess I made some corrections and
Town of Newton Planning Board, is that acceptable?
No, just put planning board. Well, I don't, it already says Town of Newton on top. Alright, I'll revise it again and again and again. Okay.
Actually, that's a very good list. Gail, of the site map requirements.
Maybe you can make a bigger block for nature of the business so we can get a little more description of what people are going to do.
Well, down here, right here, give a detailed description of the operation of the business.
That's better, yeah.
Gail's bit can be an addendum.
Oh yeah, no, I'll incorporate it in there somewhere.
Jen's got some additions to that.
Yeah, just really minor, in particular the sketch.
Move things around.
Would you? I'll send you verbiage.
Okay. We'll work on that. I have, if we're finished, are we finished with this right now?
Are we leaving this? Do I want to make some?
Yeah, I'll fiddle around with it and make those changes that we talked about. I do, I have that. Okay. I had a gentleman drop this off and he's he's going to be approaching the building department on a fire protection plan, but he was asking me, and this is his only copy, and I told him I would make sure he gets it back. So I just, he would like to know if this is the approved plan for Terex, which is CBI, CBI which is Terex. This is what he has, and he was wondering if this is the approved plan, because they want to go forward with this other driveway. So
We'd have to look it up.
Well, this is 2008, so
Right.
I told him we would find out what the approved plan was, whether it's even here or not. I said, because I looked at this and said, well, that's right across from Chonger, that probably wasn't okay. There's wetlands over here, and you have to talk to the state because it's wittier and about
It's a state road.
Two driveway cuts on there. So, we just, right now, he just wants to know if this is the
I don't believe this is
Alright, so what we can do, I'm going to ask if Gail will look this up and see if this is the approved plan, and if not, maybe we can get him a copy of their approved plan, just don't lose this one. Okay?
They can go to the registry and get a copy.
Yeah, if it's an approved plan, it's a recorded plan.
It's at the registry.
I don't know, I don't know, but he asked me, so I said I'd bring it up here.
If you can give me the deed references or I can take them down, I can look them up for you.
I don't even know.
I can look after the deed.
Yeah.
Also, just another thing. A while back, a couple of years ago, we had an issue with the signage on Rose Market.
Yes.
Okay. And I noticed that, not on the building, but they're attaching things to that freestanding sign on the post again.
Okay, that's definitely outside the
Which is a site distance problem, so
That would be a code enforcement issue.
Well, we can send them a letter, they sent it back to us the last time. So So, anyway, I put together a little note that I thought I would pass by the board and see if you thought that this would be adequate to just remind them of the fact that they're not supposed to be attaching signs on that post.
Yeah, it's a dangerous spot to back out of in the first place.
Read the last, yeah.
But why are we getting involved in code enforcement issues?
Because it's not really code enforcement, we did the original approval for the
When they came in for their minor expansion, which was fit actually in, and it fit into the part of the master plan. That was one of the things that we brought to their attention is that the signage that they had far exceeded what the town allowed, and they took everything down and then gradually starts reappearing, but it's now appearing on
It's on that sign that's outside.
Yeah, but in terms of the issue, why are we getting involved in a code enforcement issue?
No, 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 we're not getting involved in the, we want to bring the issue to code enforcement's attention.
Oh, so this is a letter to code enforcement?
No, it's not, this is a letter to
No, she wants to send that to
I want to send to the people to remind them that we already sent them a letter.
But it should come from code enforcement.
So, it is a code enforcement issue, that doesn't mean the planning board can't send a friendly reminder, I think it's a slippery slope before you start when you start doing that, I mean, if it's just a signage, I don't know if you've hired a new code enforcement officer at this point.
We don't have one.
I would suggest not getting, not doing that too often, but it's not a planning board jurisdictional matter.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, when they, when there was a complaint made by Ann Miles about the signs on that building.
Right.
We found out that we could not do anything about them signs because they were grandfathered, and it's a grandfather law. But what we did tell them, not to put any signs beyond that pole, them two poles that were there. And that's what we told them to do.
No.
There was, there was like all signs plastered on the outside of the building and stuff, which weren't the original approved ones. The one up at the top, the one sticking out the side, the one on the pole like this at the edge.
The lit, the lit signs were grandfathered exactly as they were.
Right.
But you can't take and add to a freestanding sign that expands it beyond it's not natural expansion of non-conforming.
Okay, let me see if I can show you what's happening.
And we did make them remove all the advertising signs.
You got a sign like this with, on the post, okay? They have attached cigarette signs right here, like this, on the side of it.
And we told them they couldn't do it.
Well, but now they're back again, that's the issue.
Okay.
And so what I'm saying is, all we can do is maybe, here, look at my, look at my suggested note to send to them. It just says, remember, we told you that this was not allowed, this is not the thing that was allowed before, and you just need to remove those signs because they impede the site distance with people
That shouldn't come from the planning board, it should come from the building department.
I don't think it can come from the planning board.
Really, okay.
It's not illegal for you to send a friendly reminder. What you don't have is you have nothing to back it up. It's only the code enforcement officer whom is very busy because there's nobody there, so
Why not send a friendly reminder?
Let's rest away from it.
Let the code enforcement know once we got it.
Season assist.
Yeah, I mean, we have no teeth to enforce.
Okay.
Ask the planning board now.
Okay, then you just
Are you going to, are you going to send this friendly reminder out?
If the board says okay, I will, but we have to pass it around so people can read it.
I don't, I don't have a problem, except for one word. The signs are not approved and must be removed. I put should be removed. Must is an order.
Okay. Alright. Okay. You want to shoot that around? You, I think you read it, didn't you?
You can't read.
I think you read it already.
If it's just a friendly reminder
And all of this is a reminder.
That's all it would be, and I don't have a problem with that.
We told you back in 2011.
Yeah, code enforcement can send a letter that says must.
We can't.
But that's why I honestly think it needs to go from code enforcement versus from us.
Because you don't have code enforcement, you can also go from the select board.
Right, yeah. And then it has teeth.
It could come from the select board as, because the code enforcement is the select board's agent.
Yeah, but if it's just a reminder. I don't, it
Yeah.
Yeah, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't really be a problem, I mean, Jim is a representative to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, I can
Alls we got to do is change that must to should.
Should, yeah.
And then let that, let her go out. And it's just a friendly reminder.
How about if we have a police officer?
Now you're getting into the buck, guy.
Well, to me, according to the first line, it's not a friendly reminder because it says, the planning board reviewed a code enforcement issue on our August 24th, 2011.
Right, and we did, is that it?
August 24th, 2011, code enforcement, original thing.
And that's what that one thing was, that was quoted, came from that.
Does the town have the owner of the property's contact information?
Oh yeah.
Like email or phone number?
Yeah, GP.
Might that be an easier route?
I could walk across the street and tell them.
Okay.
I could do that, would you rather have me do that?
Not as a board member, but just as a
Concerned citizen.
Yeah.
He lives across the street from you now?
No, I could walk across the street at the general store.
Oh, okay, okay.
At the general store. Okay, so what are we doing? I'm not doing anything, then that's fine.
I vote nothing.
Okay.
There's not other issues, we get involved in that, how we get someone, why don't you send it in about this, why don't you send it in about that?
Okay. If I see it, next time I see him, I'll say something to him.
Barbara, you could refer it to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, if you want to do something, that's what you should do, is refer it to the board of selectmen.
I have no problem with taking it to the board of selectmen.
Alright, I'll print out another copy and give it to you.
Instead of putting Danny, why not put board selectmen?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
We have to vote on that?
You can just consensus, have a consensus.
Consensus that the Board of Selectmen should take care of it, okay.
Look forward.
I'll forward some requests to the Board of Selectmen. I'm not gonna give them my memo, they'll have to make their own memo.
Right. Ooh. Move to adjourn?
No, we can do.
No, she's got something else.
Oh, we got big correspondence.
Oh, okay, big correspondence, okay. Summary erosion control field days, June 21st and 22nd, Brentwood, in Brentwood. I can't even open it. Okay. So if you're interested in erosion control, it's $60 at the Brentwood Community Center on June 21st or June 22nd at the Rena Scrum High School. Anybody who's interested, contact Gail.
That'd be on the poll tomorrow, June 2nd.
I think that's all we have, Dan. Yes?
Did you email the, the new contract for the Rockingham Planning Commission?
Yeah, I have a question to a bookkeeper, that's why I didn't put it on the manifest tonight. Do we always have a two-tier?
Yes.
My question is, do we have enough money in the budget?
You did as of when it was discussed at the planning board. The contract hasn't changed, our rates went up a little bit.
More than what we put in the budget?
I don't, I don't believe so, 'cause I remember coming to you with what the new rates were gonna be at the time. I think it was close, but.
However, what? I thought we increased, I thought we increased that line of the budget to cover.
I looked, I looked at the annual report and we didn't.
Oh, okay, there is enough in, there is enough in the overall planning board budget to cover it.
Right, yeah, like our consulting fee, which we probably won't use much of. Although we might if we need to do, do some other things.
However, is, is what, a hundred and forty something dollar increase?
Well, it's, no, it's about a $600 increase of the year.
Did you send that to us?
Yeah, we increased.
Our, our budget is 11, 11,400. The total for the year is $12,078.
Did you send it to?
Okay. I quite honestly, I received that, but I didn't have time today during, some of a sudden, not retired.
I mean, if, if it doesn't, or if at, 'cause the contract's in six-month intervals, if at the end of the first six months, if there's not enough money, quite frankly, you guys haven't had as many meetings in the past year. We can always amend the second half of the contract if it's, if that's becoming a problem.
What we have to do is look at the money that is left because we paid, we've already made one payment this year in January.
Yeah, because we pay in January and June, so.
And I think the increase, well, we increased the, the bottom, that item in the budget. We increased it because last year's was less.
Yeah, okay, the budget didn't go up, but I don't know how much money we actually spent on that first half. That I didn't have handy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have to check.
And I guess that, that raises the other question I had about the, the way the contract's written, it's not to exceed, but we, we don't really check your hours, do we?
No, so the way we generally work with our towns is that if in a given year you go over, there was, so when you guys have applications and generally if it's something more complex than this, you bill the applicant for my time, for my review time.
Right.
If it's something that takes me 10 minutes to review, I generally don't have them send an invoice to the town. I can, but we only bill in increments of half an hour, so. So applicants pay for that part of the time. If you go, in a given year, if you go over because you've had longer night meetings, because that's kind of a hard thing to judge, we don't charge you if there's excess. If you don't use up all your hours, then basically we try to work on other projects to help you spend that money on technical assistance.
That's always.
I guess my question is, does anyone really check? Does anybody keep track?
I keep track on my timesheet, so if you want the invoices of, you know, what hours have been spent coming to meetings, traveling, helping Gail with questions.
That, that's one of the things that I've always had is, I, when I first got on the board and was in the chair, we were paying for 24 meetings a year. However, we never had more than 22 meetings in a year because there's always election day and so it's now down to 21, but I think it should honestly be 20 because there's always at least one meeting, one additional meeting in the year that we call up and say, "Hey, Jen, you have the night off."
Right.
In theory, we pick those up in some area, but there's no good documentation that we receive at the end of the year that says, "Okay, you know, you paid for 1,000 hours and you got 998 hours." Or we, you got 1,002 hours.
I mean, we can send you that if you would like. It accounts for meetings, planning board assistance. It doesn't get into, you know, I worked on this application.
Right, yeah.
To account for the time. I think when I had looked the last time, you spent maybe all but 2,000, maybe 1,000 of your last contract 'cause you didn't have as many meetings this past winter, so that cut down on it, you know? But we can always redo the contract if you decide to go down to just one meeting a month because you're not that busy. We can amend the contract at any point.
This is the same thing I brought to the board several years ago. We brought it down. It did sort of creep up because I think at one point, one of your predecessors, we actually had down to like 18 a year.
I think it's always been 21 or 22, whatever it currently is.
21.
The whole time I've been here. We haven't amended the number.
No, not since, remember, I've been around forever.
I've been here five years. It's been.
Have you?
Yeah, yeah, she's been here as long as me.
It doesn't seem like it's been that long.
Well, would everybody feel more comfortable about if we looked and we had the budget in front of us next meeting and then we could vote on this?
Okay, just to make sure the money is there, but.
We'll, we'll do that.
That's always good to know.
So if you can give everybody a copy of the budget for the next meeting so that we can go over that? That's great. And I think if everybody doesn't have a copy of that contract, who doesn't have a copy?
I didn't figure one out.
Okay, all right, you don't have a copy, all right.
Come on my cellphone and I can't, I can't read it on my cellphone.
All right, and if you can make a copy for Charlie and I'll.
Throw it in the mail. I'll throw it in the mail.
Yep. Okay, sounds good. Anybody have anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Has anybody noticed the survey stakes at Rose Corner?
Yeah, what's going on?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Know what they were doing.
It's our Rena section.
Yeah, I was wondering if they were gonna do something.
Is it, is it gonna be the road about? What are they doing?
The surveyors.
When did they?
Nobody yet.
When were they put there?
They started on Tuesday or Wednesday of last week.
You know what I think? I don't think it's anything for the road. I think that that piece of property that was next to the old police station is for sale and maybe they were surveying that. No.
No, I can tell you right now, the town did that because of the trees that are rotten that have started, if you look out the window, it may still be light enough, you'll see a lot of dead wood laying on the ground. It's because the big maple at the corner of Town Hall
Right.
lost a large section of it.
What has that got to do with the trees at Rose?
Because the trees are, the trees were always assumed to be the property line. The town had the property line shot in order to find out whether or not the trees are ours to take care of or the neighbors to take care of.
Okay.
It turns out they're well and truly on the neighbor's property.
Okay.
So, but we, they have to, since they were shooting the entire.
108, no, 9?
Bound, bound on this side.
They did make the ladder bound. They did North Main, past Rose Corner. They did 108 down by where the little bridge, where the dam is. They surveyed that section. I've seen all three of them being surveyed. And they did Ghul Hill. They've, they've got Marcus in the ground and it's got Newton's name on it and then it's got markings and I don't know what the markings are. TP something.
Yeah. So anyway, the, the town shot this to find out the ownership of the trees.
Okay.
And we discovered that they belong to the neighbors.